Okay, good evening. I could call this meeting to order. We have a long, long agenda here. Lots of action I need to take care of this evening. Last time there were lots of other conversations going on. So if we can keep things moving along and keep those conversations to a minimum, that would be appreciated. My standing would be appreciated. Okay, so next we have the approval of the agenda. Were there any changes I should ask you to add? Okay, there are no changes to that.
I will read through the agenda.
Thank you Deb.
I'll second it.
Thank you Gina. Motion by Deb, seconded by Gina to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Thank you. Delegations, there are none, so we will skip that. Next, I need a motion to approve a consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th, the payment of the bills, approve the treasury report, approve the clerk's report, and the rec report. By Kelly Schneider.
I move the agenda. I approve the consent agenda.
Gina?
I'll second.
Thank you Reed. Motion by Gina, seconded by Reed to approve the items listed on the consent agenda, consisting of the minutes of the regular board meeting of June 16th, payment of bills, approve the treasury report, approve the clerk's report, and the Lincoln County Rec Commission Report, provided by Kelly Schneider. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Morgan Nish. Is it FFA? Do you want to say anything before it gets rolling here?
Just sort of timer fifteen minute interruption.
I mean, my presentation's only going to take an hour.
I think everyone knows Morgan. But I just want to tell you that as I've worked with her up to this point and she's been in the building and working, I'm so excited, the passion that she brings to this program. And she's here just to share a little bit about FFA and just to keep people informed and to keep them excited.
All right, well, thanks for asking here. Yeah, like you said, FFA, AgEd is all new to everybody. So I just kind of made a short presentation really over FFA because once we dig into AgEd, we're going to know a lot more at that point once as soon as we start to go through it. But just to kind of get the community really excited about both. Yeah. Okay. So some of the classes that I'm going to offer next year is Intro to Agriculture, Animal Science, Ag Wellness, Ag Structures, and Ag Mechanics. You know, my two- and three-year plan, this might look a little different, but these same basic classes will always be in there usually. So for FFA, a lot of people call it the Future Farmers of America. That's actually not the name anymore. It's called the National FFA Organization. So they wanted to make sure it was longer for everybody to say. So big thing, students don't actually have to take my classes to be in FFA, but I do highly encourage it. I think it's a really great opportunity to start to learn about FFA besides outside of school. So if you take my classes, you're going to learn a lot about FFA, where you are going to learn a lot extracurricular too, but highly recommend taking class. Okay, so there actually are memberships to get into FFA. You have your annual memberships, state and local, both of them. That is what the school, I guess, pays for us to have FFA. I think it's $20, is that right? I think it's put somewhere in there. Now, students also have a membership as well. I'm not sure what that number's going to look like yet, but I would say more than $20. But that'll also give you a T-shirt, is my thinking. So that's kind of what the membership all entails. You have your state dues and your local dues. So some big opportunities with FFA. I'm just going to read through the list and then I'll go into a little bit more depth as I go through the slide. So we have leadership development contests, which are CDEs, which is career development events, community service, trips and experiences, scholarships and grants, and then networking and connections. So leadership development. Each chapter has officers. And you have your treasurer, you have, you know, your president, your vice president, sentinel, reporter, and secretary. Now, you can actually become, as you start going through FFA, you can become an officer in bigger places, I guess, besides just your chapter. So you have your local chapter, and then you have your district. And we're the North Central District is what we are, our district, FFA. And then you can actually become a state officer. And then from there, you can become a national officer, and you can get on the national FFA team. So then that connects you with a world of people, I guess, from all over. It's pretty great once you start to dig into it a little bit more. State offices are a little bit more common than national. Everything is interviewed, and that's how you get the position. So once we start to get into it, here at Lincoln, my, this first year, I'm not going to hold officer interviews because nobody knows what FFA is yet. So I've chosen a couple, three students to really help me start this big leadership team to get all the other students excited. I've got some work from, the staff members actually has recommended several students to me just to kind of get the word out. And I've already met with a few of them. And they're also very excited. So makes me excited. FFA offers a huge role model aspect. So, you know, not only with their peers, but the younger students as well. Because we will be working with grade school kids. We'll be working with the community. You know, we'll probably even see kids in our home school. I mean, it's just a huge opportunity to be a big role model. And then competition team leaders. So as I go through, I'll kind of talk about competitions as far as with FFA. And when we go to these competitions, you know, we need that one leader to say, all right, I need you to be over here in this, say, specific category and while I'm also advising all the rest. I'll pick one leader to kind of help me make sure everybody is on board. So there's a lot of opportunity as far as leadership goes. And then as you start to go through FFA as well, you earn degrees. The highest degree is the American degree, and that's kind of the highest honor. And how you get that is you show me year after year that you are learning FFA, you enjoy FFA, you want to continue to take it further. And then you can actually apply to get the American degree. And if you get the American degree, I do believe you're honored at the National FFA Organization, the big, the big, I feel that they have in Indianapolis every year. So it's pretty interesting. If you get it, I mean, it's a big deal. You can actually get your first degree as an eighth grader. And that's if you show, you know, interest in FFA, you're learning what I would hope and expect of you. You can earn degrees there, and then as you keep going. I think there's five degrees total that you can earn through your FFA experience. And then just continuously learn leadership skills. FFA is big into leadership. That's really what we preach. You know, we want to make sure that you are going to graduate and be able to succeed in the real world is what we aim for. So the career development events, these are the competitions that I spoke about earlier. There's all kinds of CDEs. Obviously, you're not going to make it to all of them. There's way more than you can make it to in a year. But they're really great opportunities. I mean, even for the kids that don't want to be, you know, going to the ag field. You have job interview. You can go and compete in job interviews. You know, and then you do earn little rewards for it as well. If you say you want to open a nursery, you can compete against other peers in our district as well as throughout the state in nursery competitions, landscapes. I mean, there's floriculture, public speaking. For those, you know, individuals that really want to go to school and say, well, or work on an engine or anything like that, they do have ag mechanics competitions as well. Communication, I mean, there's just a whole list. And we do, I actually got the list of CDEs for this next year, but I couldn't quite print it off yet. My computer was giant. But I'll email it if anybody wants it. It's kind of, there's a lot, it's really, really neat. Community service. So one big thing with FFA is community service as well among leadership. You know, we want to be there for the community. We want to help any way we can. So, you know, even if it's a collection drive, community cleanup day, you know, if we want activities with elderly, just all kinds of different things. You know, fundraisers for not only FFA, but say there's another organization that needs extra help fundraising. You know, that's a good opportunity for the FFA to really step in and take initiative and help out. I mean, the opportunities are endless as far as community service goes. So some trips and experiences with FFA. There's, I mean, this is just a small list of all the things that you can actually do. But, you know, you have your state contests and convention. That's a big one. So if we exceed at, say, succeed, I guess, exceed of the CDEs, which is the career development event, you actually make it to state. And your chapter can win state contest, which also helps with funding for FFA. So, big thing. National Convention, which was held in Indianapolis generally every year. Last year, they did not hold it for the first time in a long time, you know, COVID. And then National Western Stock Show in Denver, Colorado. You know, you've got your Fort Worth Stock Show, the American Royal in Kansas City. And then there's a big leadership conference in Washington DC that you can go to if, you know, that's something that really sparks your interest. And I think it'd be really great down the road for the leadership team that we have, the, my chapter leaders. I think that'd be a really good opportunity for them to go and see, you know, how other chapters interact as well. There's a lot of opportunity. FFA also offers scholarships and grants. So grants are available for SAEs, which is Supervised Ag Experiences. And that's kind of, we do a lot of that within classroom, like in the actual agricultural education. That is where the SAEs come into play. Now, you still will do them a little bit with your FFA as well because you'll have your CDEs, SAEs. It's all intertwined. I mean, it's, I could go on and on about it. But there's grants for it. SAEs are an opportunity for kids to go out and basically intern is what it is. If they're interested in, I mean, want to be a spray operator, say, we'll go send one David for a day. And you can have somebody riding your sprayer with you all day and teach them. And then they actually offer local senior scholarships as well through the FFA. Two million plus is awarded every year to FFA individuals for scholarships, grants, et cetera. Big networking and connections. You've got local connections just within, you know, your own county. You've got your districts, which is our North Central District. And then you have state connections and national. So when you go to the CDE events, you'll see people from your district, but you'll also see people from other districts. So you start making connections with other kids as well or leaders. Yeah. And funding for FFA, a lot of it comes from businesses and/or individuals. That's where a lot of the funding for FFA comes from. As well as food sales. They do fruit and cheese sales is a big one that other departments do, other FFA chapters. You know, free, free will donation meals. And then labor option. That's something that kind of talks with a few of my other, my FFA leaders, I guess, about here recently, last week. So a labor option is where the students in the chapter, the FFA chapter, the students, we all get a big event. We get the community together. You actually sell off your students for the day to go and help, say, somebody needs a lawn mower. They don't have to do it, it's not required. But if a student wants to help, somebody can basically buy them for the day. And they can, say, somebody needs a pantry organized. Maybe that's all it is. Maybe somebody needs a mail-stove. I don't know. Obviously, there is restrictions, you know, we're not going to work on that. But I think it's a really great way for a chapter to earn, you know, some extra and see over their day weekend. But it's a really good way for a chapter to, you know, earn some extra money for donations or for funding, you know, to get our blue jackets, to get some extra T-shirts so it doesn't come out of, you know, students' pockets, our pockets. You know, just kind of help with some of that. And then it's also self-sustaining, you know, as you start winning CDEs or rewards, you'll start to see some more kind of flow in as well. So there's quite a bit of funding that you can do with FFA to ensure. And a big thing with funding too is we can send the kids to Indianapolis, you know, and they basically, you know, if you get enough funding, basically don't have to pay anything, you know, out of pocket. So it's a really great, you know, we really want community supporters. We want business supporters. We want to do fundraisers of our own. So that way the kids can go and do, you know, fun things. You know, if we want to go to the American Royal, we can drive down there in a bus or, you know, those kinds of things. And any questions? It's kind of a brief, short overview, but.
You mentioned eighth graders are involved. Is that something that you're tackling this year?
Yeah, so I'll have all of my eighth, all of the eighth grade I will have in my Intro to Agriculture class. And that is where we'll start learning about FFA. Some chapters actually allow eighth graders to join free for the first year just to kind of get a taste of FFA. And I actually really like that idea. You know, just if they decide they like it, and then as a freshman, they can pay their dues, they get the T-shirt, and they're, they're wanting to FFA. But having eighth grade, you know, it does give them a really good opportunity to start learning about FFA at a young age. And I think this year, you know, the eighth grade is, they're going to kind of be my top jobs in the next couple of years because they're going to have me all the high school. So I think that's going to be a big benefit to really start at a young age. Yeah.
You mentioned district. How many, how many schools fall into the North Central Kansas District? Do you know how many?
I don't, off the top of my head, John, honestly. I would say probably up, at least eight to 10. If not, a little more. I know Loy's in our district, Elsmore's in our district. I don't know many out of the states. Solbon is obviously, I think, Osborne. So yeah, there's, there is, it's a very large district. But there's, there's not a lot. So a lot of the kids that they play sports with. And then even your bigger schools, you know, we don't play Elsmore in a lot of things, but gives the kids an opportunity to interact with, you know, bigger schools as well.
See what other chapters are there?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, definitely.
Any other questions? Thank you, Morgan. I know you've hit the ground running, and you've got a lot accomplished, and you're a short amount of time you've been here. So good luck and keep it up. Hi. Good morning. Okay, next we have some donations.
Yep, and there's two motions for donations because I think it's really important that we recognize people who are willing to help support our schools. So the first motion will be for the VFW Auxiliary, where, you know, last year when I first started, I know that they donated $300 per school. It's my understanding that this has gone on for some time. You know, there's a lot of places where organizations can put funds, but their belief and their support, you know, I just feel like we need to separate these out and really recognize and appreciate the VFW Auxiliary for $300 for the high school, Junior High School, and $300 for the elementary school. So do we accept the donation from the VFW Auxiliary?
Thank you, John. Second. Thank you, Deb. Okay, motion by John, seconded by Deb. The USD 298 Board of Education accept VFW Auxiliary Number 7928, check number 3284, and the amount of $300 made payable to Lincoln Junior Senior High School, and VFW Auxiliary Number 7928, check number 3285, and the amount of $300 made payable to Lincoln Elementary School. Both donation checks are earmarked for the student needs. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. And I'm going to reiterate what Mr. Crenshaw said. Definitely appreciate the gift that he's willing to donate to the school every year. So it's much appreciated. Okay, so the next one.
The next motion is for track donations as the community is gathering steam on the track project. And besides the legal side, that we need to accept every donation individually, again, I think people have a lot of places they can send money to individually. So I would like to recognize these donations. Barbara Gorley, $100. Mike and Pat Biggs, $50. Andrea and Mark Smith, $1,000. The Class of 1965, $500. The Meltzer Family Trust, $500. And Pam Zacco, $20. All of these people have seen our need, and they have responded. And I think they need to be recognized for that as well.
I salute.
Thank you, Gina.
I'll second.
Thank you, Reed. Motion by Gina, seconded by Reed. The USD 298 Board of Education accept the repair of the track, except for, excuse me, repair of the track at Metner Field. The following donations. Barbara Gorley, $100. Mike and Pat Biggs, $50. Andrea Smith, excuse me, Andrea and Mark Smith, $1,000. Class of 1965, $500. Meltzer Family Trust, $500. And Pam Zacco, $20. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Again, thank you to all those that donated for our track fund. Got a good start, so appreciate it. Okay, KSB June Policy Updates.
Every June, KSB sends out their recommended policy updates. And those are just before you to accept, and then we'll amend our board policies accordingly.
I salute.
John, I'll second. Gina? Okay, here's a couple letters. Motion by John, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education approve the following June KSB policy updates as listed. D.C., D.F.A.C., E.E., G.A.A.C., G.A.A.C.A., G.A.F., I.D.A.A., J.D.D., J.D.D.C., J.G.E.C., and J.G.E.C.A. All in this, all, any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. If I didn't have to read that, I'll read it again. Need an E.I.O. on top of that one. Yeah. Okay, next, the next ones, we have a lot of routine motions to be made. So if you can kind of keep those moving. Much appreciated with that as well. So first off, we have election of president.
I would nominate John Buttonoff as president.
I second that nomination.
Okay. Nomination cease with that motion or do a motion?
I nominate cease with yes and no.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
So first off, we had a motion by Reed, seconded by John, or excuse me, Gina, to nominate John Buttonoff as president. All in this, any discussion? All in favor? It's like I did backwards, sorry, guys. Seven oh. And then motion by Davis, seconded by John, that the nominations for president cease. All in favor? Seven oh. So yay, congratulations, Mr. President. Do you want to move to this seat?
I suppose that's probably.
Okay. All right. Works for me.
The way you had to do it last year.
It's okay. Okay. In my glasses.
Looks like the water's on. All right. Moving along, we will go to election of vice president.
I nominate Deb Zacco.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, I have a nomination. I have a nomination for Deb Zacco as vice president. Do we have a motion to cease nominations?
I have. Are you going to second?
Oh.
That's okay. Okay. I was, well, I was going to nominate Gina just for continuity.
Okay.
So, if I could do that, please.
So we have nominations for Deb Zacco and Gina Eckhart.
Put the pressure on, why is it in that seat?
I know. Now we do.
If there's not a second, it dies.
It's like a second.
Okay.
Yeah, then you just ignore it.
I'll second that.
For Gina?
Okay.
Okay. It didn't die for like a second. Who is my motion and second? On Deb.
You.
My motion? Oh, sorry.
It was Reed. It was Reed, John.
Reed.
No statement.
Cease nominations. Any motion to cease nominations?
I salute.
Okay. So we should vote on cease nominations. All in favor that we, second.
Do you want to accept? Yeah, I mean, I could add a quick.
So we have a motion and a second that nominations cease. So any more discussion? All in favor of that, say aye. Okay, seven oh. Nomination cease. Now, hand vote for each one. Is it just all in favor of Deb? Raise your hand. All in favor of, okay. Okay, so all in favor of Deb Zacco for vice president? Raise your hand. Okay, we have four. All in favor of Gina Eckhart for vice president? Raise your hand. Three. Okay. So, for three, we have Deb over here, vice president. I'm going to move on, I gotta take care. Okay. Congratulations.
Deb, you'll come over here and say, as for the vice president.
Oh, okay. I need your chairs. You want to? No, we're going to pass on your seat. You understand, right? You're on.
You can keep your.
Hello, Gina.
Okay. Moving on here. We have an appointment of clerk of board. A motion to appoint Greta Oenmiller. Okay. DJ moved, do I have a second?
I say.
Okay. DJ moved. David seconded that the Board of Education of USD 298 appoint Greta Oenmiller as clerk of the board for the 2021-2022 school year. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor? Sorry, that's one thing I'm opposed. Okay, seven oh. That's one thing I'm not used to is discussion.
It's hard to use.
Appointment of deputy clerk. We have Norma Codman. Would someone move?
I salute.
Okay, Gina moves.
I'll second.
Three seconds. That the Board of Education of USD 298 appoint Norma Codman as deputy clerk of the board for the 2021-2022 school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay, appointment of capers agent. We have Greta Oenmiller on here as capers.
I salute.
Okay, David Boe. Ben Winters. Seconded that the Board of Education of USD 298 appoint Greta Oenmiller to act as capers agent for the 2021-2022 school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Appointment of board treasurer. We have Nancy Knapp for board treasurer. Okay, Reed moves.
I second.
Gina seconds. To, that the Board of Education of USD 298 To, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Nancy Knapp as board treasurer for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Appointment of school attorney. We have K A S B legal assistants.
I second.
Moves.
I second.
Gina Eckhart seconds, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint K A S B legal assistants as their school attorney for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay, the designation of depositories. We have Bank of Teskett, Citizen State Bank, and Wilson State Bank. Okay, T J moved.
I say you.
David seconds, that the Bank of Teskett, Citizen State Bank, and Wilson State Bank be named as official depositories for schools' funds for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Board agent for investment of idle funds. We have Scott Crenshaw as board agent.
I second.
Okay, Gina moves.
I'll second.
Three seconds. That the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Scott Crenshaw as board agent for investing idle funds for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Designate official paper for legal publications, the Lincoln Sentinel Republican.
I second.
David moves.
I'll second.
Deb seconds, that the Lincoln Sentinel Republican be named as the official newspaper for legal publications for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay, we'll need two motions for appointment of food service director and authorized representative. Scott Crenshaw as the director of food service.
I second.
Okay, Patty moved.
I agree.
David seconded, that the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education appoint Scott Crenshaw as director of food service for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. And then for an authorized representative, we have Norma Codman.
I second.
Okay, Gina moves.
I'll second.
Three seconds. That the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education appoint Norma Codman as authorized representative for food service for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay, appointment of director of title funds. We have Denise Schmidt down for director of title funds, without a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, Deb moves.
I'll second.
T J seconds, that the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education appoint Denise Schmidt as director for title funds for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven. Okay, we need to establish our Board of Education meeting dates and times, you'll find that under addendum four. You may want to make note of March, it's addendum one, sorry.
You said four.
But, March seventh is the first Monday of March due to a conflict with spring break, so it is moved up to the first Monday.
I second.
Okay.
I second.
Motion by Patty, seconded by David, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight establish the following meeting schedule for regular Board of Education meetings to be held in the Board of Education conference room during the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. August ninth, twenty twenty-one, seven P M. September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, seven P M. October eleventh, twenty twenty-one, seven P M. November eighth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. January tenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. February fourteenth, Ring of Valentine, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. March seventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. May ninth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. And July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven P M. Any discussion on those dates? If not, all in favor? Appointment of agent of record for insurance. We have Gage Mortimer of the Davidson Agency down. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll move.
Okay, Deb?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gina, uh, motion by Deb, seconded by Gina, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Gage Mortimer, the Davidson Agency, as their agent of record for property and liability insurance for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we need to adopt mileage for reimbursement. Fifty-six cents per mile, do I have a motion?
I second.
Okay, Bree moved.
I'll second.
Deb seconded, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight establish the approved state mileage rate of fifty-six cents per mile for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we have an appointment of truancy officers. We have principals at both buildings, so do I have a motion for Denise Schmidt as truancy officer at L E S?
I'll second.
Okay, T J?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gina, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Denise Schmidt as truancy officer for the Lincoln Elementary School for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
I second.
We are, we're there, we're going to discuss a next vote.
Yes.
Just a second.
You got the next one.
Give you the next one. All in favor? Seven oh. Okay, now, we need a motion for Nikki at the Lincoln Junior Senior High School as truancy officer. David?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deb, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Nikki Flynn as truancy officer for the Lincoln Junior Senior High School for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we need to adopt an eleven hundred and sixteen hour school year.
I second.
Okay, Patty?
Motion. I'll second.
T J seconded, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight adopt the eleven hundred and sixteen hour school year for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved petty cash amounts. I can read through this one, the Board of Education approve petty cash amounts for the school years follows, eight hundred dollars for L E S, a thousand dollars for the Board of Education Office, and thirteen hundred dollars for Lincoln Junior Senior High School. Have a motion?
I second.
Deb moved, we have Gina second. That the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight approve petty cash amounts for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year as follows, eight hundred for L E S, a thousand for the Board of Education Office, and thirteen hundred for Lincoln Junior Senior High School, all of which are monthly reimbursables. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next, we have Resolution seven twenty-one oh one, to waive the annual requirement of generally accepted accounting principles. It says addendum two, is that here addendum two?
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
I have to read all this. Kansas Law requires that we adopt a resolution removing us from the requirements of general accepted accounting principles and fixed asset accounting. The following resolution is recommended to be passed. Whereas, the Unified School District two ninety-eight Lincoln, Kansas, has determined that the financial statements and financial reports for the year ended twenty twenty twenty-one to be prepared in conformity with the requirements of K S A seventy-five eleven twenty A A are not relevant to the requirements of the cash basis and budget laws of this state, and are of no significant value to the Board of Education or the members of the general public of the Unified School District two ninety-eight. And, whereas, there are no revenue bond ordinances or other ordinances or resolutions of the municipality which require financial statements and financial reports to be prepared in conformity with K S A seventy-five eleven twenty A A for the school year ended twenty twenty-one. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Unified School District two ninety-eight Lincoln, Kansas, in regular meeting duly assembled this twelfth day of July twenty twenty-one, that the Board of Education request the Director of Accounts and Reports to waive the requirements of K S A seventy-five eleven twenty A A as they apply to the Unified School District two ninety-eight Lincoln for the year ending twenty twenty-one. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education shall cause the financial statements and financial reports of the Unified School District two ninety-eight Lincoln to be prepared on the basis of cash receipts and disbursements as adjusted to show compliance with the cash basis and budget laws of this state. Upon motion by T J, seconded by Gina, that the foregoing Resolution seven twenty-one oh one was duly adopted. Any discussion? All in favor? Rescinding and adopting Board of Ed policy. Each year, the Board of Education must adopt the following resolution for rescinding policy statements found in Board minutes thus updating the Board policies. Have a motion.
I second.
Motion by David.
I'll second.
Seconded by Deb, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight adopt the following resolution. Be it resolved that all policy statements found in the minutes of this Board of Education handbook prior to July first, twenty twenty-one, be rescinded and that the Board of Education adopt the policy manual as has been presented and recommended by the Superintendent of Schools to govern this school district during the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, subject to periodic review, amendment, and revision. Any discussion? All in favor? Appointment of Freedom of Information Officer. Scott Crenshaw.
I second.
Gina moved.
I'll second.
Patty seconded. That the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Scott Crenshaw, Freedom of Information Officer, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Appointing custodian of records, we have Greta Oenmiller down, custodian of records.
I second.
Bree moved. David seconded, that the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Greta Oenmiller, custodian of records, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Yes, we have graduated. Appointment of a homeless liaison and migrant coordinator. We have Scott Crenshaw for homeless liaison and migrant coordinator.
I second.
T J moved, Deb seconded. That the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Scott Crenshaw as U S D two ninety-eight homeless liaison and migrant coordinator for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? An appointment of a hearing officer for free and reduced lunches. Nikki Flynn as hearing officer for free and reduced lunches.
I second.
Okay, Bree moved.
I'll second.
Deb seconded. That the Board of Education of U S D two ninety-eight appoint Nikki Flynn as hearing officer for free and reduced lunches for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved compliance coordinator for federal anti-discrimination laws, including Title six, seven, eight, nine?
Nine.
Got it. American Disabilities Act in section five oh four.
I'll second.
Gina moved. Patty seconded. That the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education appoint Scott Crenshaw as compliance coordinator for federal anti-discrimination laws, including Title six, Title seven, and Title nine, American Disabilities Act, A D A, and section five oh four for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved early payment policy per K S A twelve one oh five B. Have a motion?
Sure. I'll second.
Okay, second. Do we want an explanation on this? Is there any explanation to it? It's about three pages long. It's about three page explanation.
It's, I'm.
Motion by Gina, seconded by Patty, that U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education approve early payment policy per K S A twelve one oh five B for the twenty twenty-one, twenty two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Want to know more, ask Scott, he's probably got some reading material. Okay, approved Resolution seven twenty-one oh two to establish home rule by the Board of Education. As set forth in addendum three, if you have it in here. Bree moved.
I'll second.
Deb seconded. That the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education approve Resolution seven twenty-one oh two to establish home rule as set forth in addendum three. Any discussion? All in favor?
Somebody needs to ask about that, that's easier than we should. We all understand that. It's not where it's local control.
Okay, we have approved foster point of contact, we have Scott Crenshaw as our foster care point of contact.
I second.
Okay, David?
I'll second.
Seconded by Gina. That the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education approve appointing Scott Crenshaw, foster point of contact representative for U S D two ninety-eight Lincoln for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay, we need a motion to approve the destruction of antiquated records as the statutes and superintendent so determine. T J?
I second.
David seconded. That the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the destruction of antiquated records as the statutes and the superintendent so determine. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Alright, we need to take action on the academic banquet as it falls on Wednesday evening, six thirty on May fourth.
I'll second.
Okay, Patty moved.
I'll second.
Gina seconded. That the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the L H S academic banquet being held on Wednesday, May fourth, twenty twenty-two, at six thirty P M. Any discussion? All in favor? We need to take action on improve waiving admission fees for K through twelve students at all activities specified by the Board of Education. Okay, T J moved.
I'll second.
Three second. That the U S D two ninety-eight Board of Education. That the USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve waiving fees for K through twelve students at all activities specified by the Board of Education. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven. Now, we need to take action on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Student Accident Insurance through Student Assurance Services.
I'll second.
Gina moved.
Seconded.
Any seconded? That the USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Student Accident Insurance through Student Assurance Services Incorporated. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven. All right. Now, we need to take action on handbooks. We all got an emailed copy of those updates. Any discussion on any of those? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll be accepting.
Okay, we have a motion by Gina.
I'll second.
Seconded by TJ. That USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the Classified Staff Handbook, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the Lincoln Elementary School Student Handbook, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Lincoln Junior Senior High School Staff Handbook, the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Lincoln Elementary School Certified Handbook, and the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two Lincoln High School Student Handbook, and the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Lincoln Junior High School Student Handbook. Any discussion?
I have a big question. Um, in the LES Student Handbook, there was a band thing? Were there large group instruments? I know at one point in time, we didn't, I was thinking we didn't charge them because it was, I mean, it was required that they participate in band and degree. Am I thinking wrong? I mean, I know we have, I know we have upkeep of them, and I get the forty-five dollars, I'm good with that, but, um, I guess if it's required, if we require them, then we're requiring them too. Funny question. So I know there's upkeep to them, and I know they're specific. Just, just a comment.
Yeah. It's, is that a, that's probably a total cost that's divided out, prorated.
It's like a forty-five dollar thing.
Yes.
If I remember right, we need another forty-five dollar year, which is very inexpensive. But.
I would say that it might be something, I guess we can see how it goes this year, but maybe the Education Foundation might look to that as something that might be something we can help with. I don't know. There's some places that we might be able to help upkeep and divide quality instruments.
Instruments are an expense that averages about four or five thousand dollars a year for repairs and cleaning. Just a FYI. We'd be guess in the range of four to seven thousand dollars, but it's typically around the five thousand dollar mark to for the summer maintenance and cleaning and repair.
I know when you six three half, it was optional, and so that's what you recharge.
I would accept the motion.
Okay, I will make the motion that we strike that forty-five dollar fee for fifth grade students band rental. Since it's required. Not an optional less.
That would be striking from the Lincoln Elementary School Student Handbook.
Right.
Okay. So, uh, we have a motion on the table prior to that. But that's an amendment. Would you, will your motion stand with that amendment? Okay. Seconded?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, okay. We have a motion by Gina, seconded by TJ, that we approve the aforementioned handbooks with the correction to the Lincoln Elementary School Student Handbook that fifth grade band students do not have to pay the forty-five dollar instrument. Any other discussion? All in favor of that motion? Say aye. Raise your hand, sorry. All in favor.
You just finished what you said.
Too many meetings where everybody says aye in this one. Okay, moving on. Take action on the USD two ninety-eight's KSDE Child Nutrition Program Procurement Plan.
I second.
Okay, Gina, motion? Patty seconds. That the USD two ninety-eight approve Lincoln's Kansas State Department of Education Child Nutrition Program Procurement Plan for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any discussion?
I think hot dogs should be on one. It's school meals.
All in favor? Seven. You have to roll up that hamburger and make hot dog down. Okay. Take action on USD two ninety-eight Lincoln's KSDE Child Nutrition and Wellness Program Agreement. I have a motion.
I second.
Okay, Patty?
I'll second.
Removed. Seconds. That the USD two ninety-eight approve Lincoln's Kansas State Department of Education Child Nutrition and Wellness twenty twenty-one Program Agreement. All in favor? Seven. Okay. Um, your milk bids will be found as Addendum four?
We reached out for milk bids and we got responses from F and A Food and Highland Dairy. If you look at each category of bid, it was split three-three with winning bids. But what pushed, and we have Highland this year. What pushes Highland forward is their full-service concept where they put product away. They don't just drop the cases. They also credit outdated leaking cartons. And I called Highland and F and A both to discuss service level. Um, and they also do a pre-holiday pickup and credit of products, so if there's not milk sitting there over Christmas, and then we don't get credit for it. So my recommendation is we accept the bid from Highland Dairy as our milk provider for next year.
I'll second.
Okay. TJ moves.
Second.
David seconds. That the USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the milk bid from Highland Dairy for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven. All right. Take action on the USD two ninety-eight Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Plan.
We were given basically four different options from Blue Cross Blue Shield this year. We had as an asset on our side KSPE Risk Management as a broker who was involved in this. And if the Board would like to move on this this evening, here's, here's my recommendation. We were one of very few districts that realized a decrease in health insurance premiums. Some districts have seen thirty to forty percent increases in their healthcare premiums. We were able to experience a reduction. So it would be my recommendation that the Board consider changing our health insurance policy, if you will. And with these savings, we pay one hundred percent of our employees' option C healthcare. The premium is three hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Healthcare insurance is a fascinating thing because it is critical to the success and satisfaction of a lot of employees. Benefits matter greatly. I know our employees in the past have paid twenty dollars a month, but with this reduction, and, and who knows what will happen year to year? It said some people were surprised with thirty percent, forty percent. Some premiums in some districts that I've talked to are over eleven hundred dollars per employee. So I think when we have the opportunity to serve our employees, it's my recommendation, recommendation that we take that opportunity. So I would recommend to the Board, if you've so moved to move on this this evening, that we, uh, take the Blue Edge Triple Option, which is the exact same coverage that we have right now, and we pay a hundred percent of the three hundred and fifty-six dollar and eighty-seven cent premium.
I'll move that we pay a hundred percent of the cost of the three hundred and fifty-six eighty per month for all employees' insurance.
I'll second that motion.
I'll second. Okay, motion by Deb, seconded by Gina, that the USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve Blue Edge Triple Option offered by Blue Cross Blue Shield with the Board of Education paying up to three hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents per month for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay. Seven. Take action on the price of adult school lunch. And breakfast. Do you have that? Price. Oh, okay, there it is. Sorry. Uh, we said the adult school lunch and adult breakfast, three ninety for lunch and two forty for breakfast.
I second.
Okay, David moves?
I'll second.
And Bree seconds? That the USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve the price of an adult school lunch be set at three dollars and ninety cents and two dollars and forty cents for adult breakfast for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven.
And you'll note there's no student prices on here because the, uh, federal government has extended free meals for all students. That's why we don't have to set prices for, uh, students this year.
Okay. Take action on Resolution on Revenue Neutral Rate. Uh, Addendum five in your packet?
Yep.
If you thought the resolution to not have GAAP accounting principles in place was complex, then you haven't seen anything yet. Revenue Neutral Rate has been bouncing around for months with everyone trying to figure out what it is, and everybody seems to know a piece, and nobody knows everything. Basically, what Revenue Neutral Rate is, is if you're going to collect more taxes, and this was part of the Tax Transparency Bill that passed. If you're going to collect more revenue than you did last year, then you will exceed the Revenue Neutral Rate. So if valuations in the county go up and our mill levies stay exactly the same, we generate more revenue as a mill of that total valuation. So it is very unlikely that anybody will go below the Revenue Neutral Rate if their valuations go up. It's, it just can't happen. So what we have to do is jump through a bunch of new hoops with Revenue Neutral Rate. Um, I have until July twenty to tell, um, Dawn Harlow at the county that we are going to exceed the revenue rate. She sent me documentation that said our valuations will increase, so therefore our revenue will increase accordingly. Um, but we have to have a resolution as a board that we are going to exceed the Revenue Neutral Rate before we can continue forward. But, but it's very important that everybody understands we aren't raising taxes. We aren't raising mill levy. We are keeping the same mill levy. It's just that if the valuations go up, then the revenue increases. It is a mess in, as far as budgeting for this year with, with things like this, but I need a resolution from the Board that understands that we will be exceeding Revenue Neutral Rate.
Okay.
I second.
David moves?
I'll second.
Gina seconds? That the USD two ninety-eight Board of Education approve Resolution on Revenue Neutral Rate as outlined in Addendum five as required by the state of Kansas. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven. Okay, well, it brings us to We didn't make eight o'clock, but thirty minutes.
Sorry.
We have a motion by Patty, seconded by David, that the USD two ninety-eight Board of Education go into executive session at eight ten for thirty minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing matters related, relating to employer-employee negotiations, whether or not in consultation with representative or representatives of the body or agent, and that the Board return to open meeting at eight forty in the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of identifiable individuals. All in favor? Seven.